But I can't see what we're making comparison to. I can't tell age, location, condition, features. So I understand you didn't do an actual appraisal. But, and that's not what you were asked to do, so I'm not suggesting you should have. But I need the data that went into the analysis to be able to draw my own conclusions. So if that can't be provided, multiple addresses to me is insufficient. In particular, from what I do, I'm pretty familiar with Middletown and Homedale's locations and property addresses and values. So I'm not a licensed appraiser, but I do a lot of things that function as if. When I prepare clients for the county board and only picture comparable. So if you can supply us with that, I'd like to see the properties that were included.
Very easy to do. They've been left out intentionally because it would, for most people, create utter sheer confusion to get into the weeds of the chemical formulas of this entire analysis. I can tell you that all of that exists and it's easy to produce.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I have a question slash scenario that I'd like to ask you. So I'm looking to buy a house and my budget is $1 million. So I go to my real estate agent and I say, "I look to find a house for $1 million. That's my budget. Show me some homes." And the real estate agent says, "I have a home. It's diagonally across from a gas regulatory system. And I have another home that's about 3/4 a mile away from there. They're both $1 million. They're both square footage. I know you have little kids. Which house would you like me to show you?" So what do you think is going to be my answer?
With respect, whatever your answer would be is completely irrelevant because that's not the question. The question is not how you, Mr. Orfanatopoulos, would view this. The question is how the market would view it. And if your feeling is, "I'd rather not," what my analysis says is someone else will.
But maybe if you said, "Well, the one by the regulatory system is 950 and the other one is 1 million. Maybe for $50,000, I might deal with being nearby or for 100 less." So that's why, I mean, you have a lot of data here, but I think the common person, and I'll bet you if you ask everybody that question, will probably agree with me. So I can't, even though it's very detailed and I'm sure you spent a lot of time doing it, I'm a layperson and to me, it's not in my backyard syndrome. And I can't believe you tell me there's no difference in the value of the homes that are diagonally across that are over $1 million. There won't be a factor like that.
And my testimony is telling you to...
Members of the public, most of you have been to these hearings before, so please don't do that again. Thank you.
There's two responses that I have to that. First, the inability of a layperson to understand the inner workings of real estate is not remarkable. It's quite common. Secondly, it is my testimony tonight, based upon the entirety of my investigation, that the premise that you are doubting, it is my testimony that that premise is valid, accurate, and true.
I don't have a follow-up.
Any further questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Otto, thank you for your detailed report. I do have a question regarding the, you mentioned that the agricultural area was the largest percentage area that's connected to this property. And you did not do a study on the effect of agriculture next to a regulator station because it's your assumption that, I forget the term you used, but the value has already been decreased due to the green acres or conservation easements, correct?
That is one of the factors.
Okay, so no study was done as to how this could affect the agricultural area that's connected to this, that is nearby this property? You did not do that because you felt like it wasn't necessary because there's no value, the value's already been decreased by the factor that it's a, there's conservation that stuff, correct?
If I may, I'd like to answer that in a couple of words. Just to expand on that a little bit. The short answer is yes to what you've asked me. First, the sensitivity to, in real estate, to nearby uses is limited to uses in which people live or occupy that space. So I think that we could agree, I shouldn't say that. So as an example, if land has been set aside with a Greek for green acres classification, which means that forever and ever, nothing can ever be done with that land, that land won't care what's located across the street from it. And that is the largest part of the undeveloped land in this neighborhood. And the reason for that is that the value of land is determined by the use to which it can be put. We often talk about land selling in terms of dollars per acre, but the truth is that land never sells for dollars per acre. Land sells as a derivative of how many homes can you build there or how much retail space can be built or how many square feet of office can be developed or how many apartments can you build. Without the ability to develop, land has nominal value approaching zero. And that's what this land is. This is land that can never be put to any use forever, other than open space green acres or as agricultural land. And the plants are not affected by who's across the street. Houses are. Commercial uses are. So yes, what I'm telling you is, in addition to that, in addition to that, the value of that land has already been dramatically stripped out. The state acquired it and then sold a portion of it back for a fraction of what they paid to acquire it. The reason for that is when they sold it back, it couldn't be used for anything. And therefore, absent a productive economic use of the property in terms of development potential, land just takes up space and has nearly no value. That's why acreage, that's farmland or green land, or green acres sells for 5,000 or 10,000 or 20,000 an acre. It's just a nominal number compared to $1 million an acre for land that you can develop.
Can a community place another value on green acres for agriculture that is not monetary?
Yes.
Such as social gathering or community building or landscape value or just having a respite and something to look at?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So my question is... If I may, I'd just like to point out, though, that the value that you've just referred to has nothing to do with the value of the real estate. It has to do with how you would like to see property used in your neighborhood. But regardless of how the community views green acres or agricultural land, it's my testimony that with or without the agricultural, without, with or without the natural gas regulator station, the value of that property is unchanged. Pardon me.
Are you okay with that?
So I'm looking at a letter from CPL Partnership dated October 9th. Does everyone have that letter regarding the emissions? So my concern is getting back to what Dimitri had posed was that, I'm reading a paragraph here from our engineer, Greg, I believe this letter was from you here, that clearly states, "We are concerned about the cumulative effects of these emissions, no matter how negligible and how they will affect the air quality and what health effects they may have on human, animal, and plant systems. These toxic air pollutants can damage immune systems, develop neurological and developmental problems, respiratory and other health problems. Although these air pollutants do not exceed standards, they certainly exist and are measurable. The release of any amounts of VOCs, even though small concentrations should be avoided at the greatest extent possible." So I guess my question to you is if you disclosed this letter looking to someone that was looking to purchase that first house on Hopbrook, do you think they would purchase that home?
My investigation says yes. That homebuyers and occupiers of commercial space do not see this as being material.
So you can honestly tell me if you were showing one of your clients this home, if this closed this letter, you don't think it would have an adverse effect on the sale of that home?
So this is a hypothetical. I just want to make sure I understand the construct of this hypothetical. So the hypothetical here is that...
Did you read the letter? Let me stop by asking you that.
I don't believe so.
It's not long.
Maybe, maybe you should read the letter in its entirety before you even answer that question.
Can I just quickly respond to you, Mr. Preche?
Sure.
I have my air quality expert here who will, you want to have a response to this letter because this is really a one-way letter right now.
Yes, however, Mr. Otto did make reference to emissions and how it did not have an adverse effect.
That's absolutely correct. And that determination or conclusion that he included in his report was based upon a report that was performed by my air quality expert. I don't want to, so to speak, shoot the air out of tires of what my air quality expert is going to say, but many, if not most, of the things in this letter are simply inaccurate and mischaracterizations of the testimony and his conclusions in his report. So whether or not this letter was shown, I mean, I'm certain Mr. Otto can go through a hypothetical, but this letter is a one-way street. We have a report that proves exactly to the contrary.
Which is representation on your behalf. This is not representation.
Well, I know that, but I haven't had an opportunity to have this, to address this letter.
He can still answer the hypothetical and she can have her...
I have a hypothetical and I'm still waiting on an answer.
I'm not sure if I'm going, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I'm going to answer it or not. I still want to reconstruct from what you've said, but just as a point of clarification, I don't believe the word "emissions" appears anywhere in my report. And I also don't believe that I've referred to emissions here today. I think that's a word that you introduced.
You did at one point reference pollutants, maybe? You said it?
I did not. I did not. I just want to make it clear. That in no way is a foundation for my conclusion. That's beyond my field of expertise and I frankly wouldn't know where to begin.
You are aware emissions do come out of this heater unit, right?
I've sat here for the testimony and I heard that, yes. I've been present. I am aware of it.
Any other questions?
No, we don't have any further for this witness. I'm just going to tell members of the public that Ms. Kimmor has one more witness and that's all she has for today. And so when that's done, we are going to open up questions to all of the witnesses that the applicant has here today. And when we get to that spot in a little bit, I will organize people and give an idea of who has questions. And then when we're done with that, we're going to talk about the next meeting date that we've got. And I think at that next meeting, Ms. Kimmor has one more witness. And then we'll let people make, ask any questions of that witness, give state, give their opinions or statements. And then, because my absolute...
Can you speak into the mic, please?
We're going to have a vote on that day. So you can, Ms. Kimmor, you can go ahead and call your next witness.
Great. Mr. Redding is my next witness.
Just want to tell all the truth about the truth to help you out?
I do.
What was your first name, Mr. Redding?
Mr. Redding, can you provide the board with your educational background and professional experience in the area of economics and specifically economics and land use?
Yes, thank you. My name is Richard Redding, as I said. I'm an economic analyst and consultant and have been so engaged for over 35 years. I am a graduate of Pennsylvania State University with a degree in economics, also a principal in Richard B. Redding Associates, which is a Princeton-based consulting firm that provides economic, demographic, and financial research, research services to approximately 650 clients in both the public and private sectors. One of the specialties of the firm involves the economics of land use. And as principal of the firm, I appear on a regular basis before planning boards, zoning boards, governing bodies, and superior court throughout New Jersey and the eastern portions of the United States in matters involving the economics of land use. Over the years, I've prepared reports and appeared in over 600 matters involving the economics of land use.
I offer Mr. Redding as an expert in the area of economics and land use.
Any questions from the board? Anyone have any objections? Okay, well, except for this next one.
Thank you. Mr. Redding, can you take the board through the analysis you conducted in your fiscal impact analysis and the conclusions that you reached?
Yes, thank you. My assignment here was the response to the board's request to prepare a fiscal impact analysis, which is an assessment of the economic and financial impacts of a development upon public sector services primarily in municipality, the school district, and the county. The methodology that I used here is an input-output model that's been developed by the Center for Urban Policy Research of Rutgers. And it's a methodology that is used consistently by consultants in evaluating fiscal effects. The initial sections of my report examine the economic base and fixed fiscal structure of the community and involve the database that I collected from the municipality and the Board of Education. I also reviewed the current historical data reflected in the ratable base, the assessment ratio, budgets, and tax structure. The project that was evaluated, as I think you're very familiar with, is a development proposed by New Jersey Natural Gas Company that contemplates the construction and operation of the regulator station on a utility easement that is within an existing office park located at 960 Homedale Road in Homedale. As discussed, this is a property that's been identified as Block 13, Lot 13. And my review included a examination of the plans that have been prepared by press engineering that anticipate that the development that is proposed on this property would include a regulator station accessing utilities within an approximate 40-foot by 150-foot site easement, along with an 18-by-50-foot access easement, a 10-by, 10-foot by 160-foot pipe easement area, and two L-shaped 20-foot wide burns, and a landscape easement, as well as a 18-foot by 90-foot tree line easement. The regulator station is to be located within an existing office park and thus is part of the development that will be located on Block 13, Lot 13. This office park contains over 80,000 square feet of office space located in two buildings along with associated parking facilities, as well as a cell tower that's located on the separate 100-foot by 100-foot lease area in the northwest corner of the property. The subject property, as it currently exists, has a current estimated value of $10,824,500. Although the proposed regulator station will represent a very substantial investment by New Jersey Natural Gas, and the majority of the costs for the utility improvement are related to excavation, burning, subsurface piping, materials, equipment, design, engineering, legal, and other fees, while the visible and potentially accessible improvements are limited to added fencing and landscaping, which has an estimated cost of about $125,000. If you combine, combine this potential accessible improvement to the existing property, that would result in an existing and added development with a value of $10,939,000. The existing development, assuming the full occupancy of the office park and the occasional service that is represented by the regulator station and by the cell tower, would amount to about 230 employees. The fiscal analysis that we've utilized goes through a cost assignment calculation to determine the municipal costs that are involved with servicing not only the residential population, but also the employment base located in Homedale Township. Assigning those costs to the improved development indicates an annual cost of about $34,500. And that will be fully offset by the existing and added tax revenues of $42,000 based on the improved assessed value of $10.930. Due to the non-residential nature of this development and the entire development on Block 13, no school, no public school children are generated. Nevertheless, the assessed value of the Block 13, Lot 13 with the regulator station will generate $147,600 in a year for the school district. With the addition, the generation of these revenues for the school district, absent any school children, that's a surplus that the township receives every year from this property. The existing and added development on the subject property will also generate tax revenues from Homedale County of about $31,230 as opposed to the allocated cost of $25,000. So overall, the added revenues and allocated costs vastly exceed the service costs that are attributable to the property. In that regard, the total revenues generated by the existing and improved property amount to about $228,000 offset the allocated cost of $60,000 for a municipal surplus of $161,000. This is based upon the addition of the regulator station to the existing development on the property. Alternative approaches could reduce. And one of those alternative approaches is a typical, typical utility approach, basically where no cost or revenues would be assigned. Alternatively, we did also look at on just the incremental use of the regulator facility separately, independent from the existing development on the site, and find that would generate a additional surplus to the already substantial surplus generated by this property for Homedale Township, the school district, and the county.
I don't have any questions from Mr. Redding. If the board has any questions at this time.
So the conclusions that you've reached had to do with the office buildings, really? You didn't give us any specific conclusions with regard to the proposed site for the regulator?
We did. In the conclusion there, I said if you want to look at just the addition, just the regulator facility in isolation, you could do that. However, in the introduction of this application tonight, it was cited as the, cited as Block 13, Lot 13, indicating...
Great, but why would I want to look at what's already there? How is that in any way relevant to this application at all?
Actually, it's a good question. And why a utility, a utility improvement on east is a focus of a fiscal analysis is somewhat unusual in the state of New Jersey.
But I would be interested in hearing your testimony as to how that changed the existing site, not how the current site is. We already have that. That ratable is already here. That analysis as to what we get out of it is existing. It has nothing to do with this current application. How does the current application change the site? That's what I would want to hear.
This becomes a part of the site just as the cell tower is part of the site.
How does that change in any way? What figures, what ratable increase is Homedale Township going to get from the proposed regulator?
If you want to look at it in isolation, I presented it on page 36 of my report, in which the revenues would be $2,525 and the total allocated cost. And we can go back to that. The allocated costs are assigned on an employee basis. This site is basically an unmanned facility with the exception, there are two inspections, semi-annual inspections, and I included one other occasional inspection. So we're talking about five mandates per year. And at the township's municipal service cost for employees of about approximately a dollar per year, that would amount to about a $5 cost, so...
So you're saying the ratable is $2,500 per year?
Pardon?
Your testimony is that the, this increase of the ratable would be a tax benefit of $2,500 per year of municipality?
On the assumption that the visible improvements, which would basically be improved landscaping and fencing, would be assessable. And that's a good question. It may not be.
I don't think it is.
I agree with you. And in fact, the solar farm export has no assessment for this improvement.
So it has no ratable benefits to the township?
It would not. And if that's the case, it would generate $5 in cost with no direct offsetting revenues. So again, it's almost in the, in the context of being negligible, negligible in the context of the township's municipal budget of $21,700, $21,700 a year. So the cost, the cost burden, if you assume no added assessment, would amount to $5 in a $21 million budget.
Unless the town has to be dispatched for other purposes in terms of things that are going on.
That's what the CUPR model does. It takes all of the municipal service costs and allocates them among the, all of the services provided by police, fire, rescue services, municipal services, and allocates them among the population and the employees. And when you do that, your employee cost in Homedale Township is about $150 a year. And $150 a year for 250 days of employee risk that you have to provide services to them, that amounts to, you know, a very nominal amount. And as I said before, that this, this regulator facility is essentially an unmanned facility except for semi-annual maintenance visits and perhaps occasional monitored checkups. Like, if you take that as a precept, talk about five mandates per year. And that means that somebody will be driving on the township's road. Somebody will, should they be involved in an accident and need services from the township. They'll be using the bridges. They'll be using the municipal infrastructure. And that's the allocation. That amounts to $5.
Okay, I got it. So there's no benefit tax-wise and your testimony is there's no cost to the taxpayer to have the facility there from a township municipal?
That is probably the main reason why, in my 35 years, I've never done a fiscal study for a regulator station. And it's like a public service call. We have to say, "I want you to do a fiscal impact study on the solar panel we put on that telephone pole out there." And I say, "Well, that will be difficult to do because it's an unmanned facility essentially." And as far as the township services to that telephone pole with the solar panel are, are not measurable. If you're saying it's New Jersey medical work, what's the cost of servicing that manhole that's in the road under which the watered bowels are located?
Any questions from the board?
That's it. That's it for Terry.
Okay. I am going to open it up to the public with a show of hands for questions. So I'm going to go over the ground rules. I'm going to get you first, okay? So the ground rules are, these are questions. These are not, these are not comments. These are not long questions. These are not our opinion in the question. If you start doing that, I'm going to keep cutting you off and it's just going to make everything very long. So I'm going to ask you to please follow that. You can ask questions. Let's identify for the public, Ms. Kimmor, if you would, because not everyone was here every time, what witnesses you're going to have available for questions?
So I have all of my witnesses apart from my planner. What that means is I have my site engineer who designed the site plan, Mr. Mike Antilli. I have Mr. Cr... I have Mr. Craig Sanders, who is testified as to the operations and the need for station, the station. He's an employee with New Jersey Natural Gas Company. I have Rick Weiner, who is my landscape architect. I have Ed Patenta, who is my air quality and sound expert. And then, of course, I have the two gentlemen from this evening. Mr. Otto, who's my real estate appraiser, and I also have Mr. Redding, who just testified, and he is my economist in specifically the area of land use.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start first. Yeah, Ms. Horpanatopoulos's question is just that we have the letter of October 9th from Mr. Pulis, our expert, that I guess we thought you were going to have some testimony about. What are your thoughts?
My thought on that was, well, first of all, we just received it yesterday, but my original thought was, I wasn't, because recognizing that we were trying to keep this streamlined process, I wasn't going to present him again as another witness. If the board has questions, certainly-
Only because of your statement you made earlier. That's fine, that's up to you.
Because my, well, I mean, the testimony in the record is clear, and my position is that letter is inconsistent with that testimony and the findings submitted before. I can certainly ask. We can have any questions to ask him.
I don't think you need to. I think we have our expert's opinion that he's given us. You've given us your opinion, we can trust that we're going to weigh and attribute whatever weight we give to whatever evidence there is, so there's not a reason, unless you want to, to call somebody else. Okay, so as far as questions are concerned, Mr. Spassaro, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. Is there any particular order of the witnesses or-
Your, your call. Can I ask you a question, though? Just because I want to get an idea, and I want to be fair to the whole public. Do you have an idea of how long your questions are going to be?
Depends upon how cooperative the witnesses are.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe half hour, probably a little longer than that.
Give me a second. No. Okay, go ahead.
I don't know if you want to call this back up to-
Well, I guess right here, you know, it probably makes most sense if we had your witnesses kind of come up into the front row together, and that way you can hand them the microphone or just have them come forward a little bit and probably be quicker.
Absolutely. I was just going to ask, Mr. Spassaro, are you planning and going in order of witnesses, or are you going to jump all around?
No, I'm not going to jump all around, but I think I'll start with the board of admission with Mr. Otto, since he was the last one to testify, he's fresher than everyone else.
Okay, Mr. Otto?
My name's Anthony Spossaro, spelled S-P-O-S-A-R-O. For the record, I represent Fox Hollow Farms, the solar family, the owner of the property across the street.
How close to the mic is it?
I know where it's standing, so I can-
You might do better just adjusting the stand, because you've got your materials in your hand.
How about if I make wrong for you?
Angle it down a little. There you go.
Thank you. Mr. Otto, thank you for your testimony this evening. You indicated that the final analysis of the value of land is a function of the use to which it can be put. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the New Jersey Right to Farm Act?
Oh, in very general terms, not in any detail.
Do you know what rights are conferred upon farmers under the New Jersey Right to Farm Act?
No, I'm not an expert in that.
Wouldn't just, if I may, open this up and take you through this for a second. I'm referring to NJSA 4.1C-9, which is really the heart and soul of the New Jersey Right to Farm Act. And it essentially says that commercial farmers who operate in accordance with generally accepted agricultural management practices can engage in a variety of activities, and they include the operation of a farm market, including the construction of building and parking areas in conformance with municipal standards. It also includes conduct agriculture-related educational and farm-based recreational activities provided that the activities are related to marketing the agricultural or horticultural output of the commercial farm. And under the definition of a commercial farm, if you operate a farm market, you're allowed to sell your own agricultural output, and as long as at least 51% of your gross sales area, your sales area where your, where your gross revenues are generated from the sale of your own agricultural output, you can sell what's known in the industry as related products. You generally familiar with those concepts?
Somewhat.
Okay. You indicated in your testimony that you really didn't analyze the impact this station would have upon agricultural lands because they were limited in agriculture, limited to agricultural use, correct?
Yes.
Isn't it fair to say that all agriculture is not equal?
It is important to distinguish here between the value of real estate and the value of a going concern business. My testimony focuses on the value of the real estate. Ancillary improvements or enhancements that are made to a property which are specific and unique to the farming or agricultural use that are on that site may in fact be important to that business. They would not, however, infer or impute additional value to the real estate.
So if an individual farmer constructed a number of large agricultural buildings that are permitted under the Right to Farm Act, whether or not it is a preserved farm, that would not have any impact on the value of the real estate?
In all likelihood, the answer to your question is yes.
It would not.
Yes, it would not.
It would not.
It would not. Because those uses, first of all, tend to be de minimis in nature. Secondly, they are geared specifically to whichever agricultural use is ongoing on the property at that time, and the next user may have entirely different needs in terms of the operations, in terms of any outbuildings, in terms of whatever product may or may not be sold on the property. All of this melts away into being meaningless as it relates to the value of the real estate.
So if someone constructs a commercial farm, a retail farm market, and they have a robust business, and they're generating gross dollars, without exaggeration, millions of dollars annually, and there are other improvements on the property, on a preserved farm, that they don't enhance the value of the real estate?
That's correct.
That's correct. So a buyer wants to come along and wants to be the next farmer and wants to purchase that land with all of those improvements, that farmer can expect to pay $10,000 to $20,000 per acre as if that land was unimproved?
Given that there is a wide range of agricultural uses that can occur on a property in terms of what is being grown there, whether or not the user wants to or not sell product on-site or entirely send it off-site, given the fact that the design of agricultural buildings tends to be specific to the crop or product, produce that's being cultivated and grown, none of that would transfer to real estate value to a downstream buyer.
I'm struggling to understand your logic, and I, and I don't want to be argumentative with you. But if an individual owns a farm, and they have had a cost of a significant amount, constructed buildings that the public has access to, that they are able to sell their own agricultural output together with the agricultural output of others and related products, when that person goes to sell that real estate, the value of that real estate is not enhanced by those improvements to the property?
I've already answered this twice for you, and so now we're on the third go-around, and the answer is the same. These types of improvements do not show up as having any measurable effect on the resale pricing of agricultural land when it subsequently sells, because those improvements are unique and specific to what's being produced there at the time.
Well, if they're unique and specific, can't that uniqueness and specificity be passed on to a subsequent purchaser?
Only if the analysis is asking about business value rather than real estate value.
All right, so your testimony is, and your opinion is, that it has no value on the real estate, but it certainly could impact upon the value of a business being conducted on a commercial farm. Is that correct?
Yes, to the first part. I've not given any testimony as to the second part. So yes, it is my testimony that the, that ancillary improvements on agricultural property do not translate in any significant way to the value of that real estate. If now you want to talk about the value of a business, we can have that conversation.
I didn't think we were having a conversation. I thought this were questions and answers, but have you done an analysis of the impact on the value of a farm-related business on this property?
I have not.
You've sat here through all the testimony that's been offered the various nights by the witnesses in this case?
At least for the most recent go-around, yes, for the last three meetings.
Are you aware of any proofs that have been offered that address the issue of the impact on the value of a farm-related business on neighboring properties?
Not on value, but I have been present for the testimony by the environmental expert who indicated, in my, in my mind, quite conclusively, that there would be no measurable effects in terms of environmental effects or noise.